Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting for Monday, May 9th. And we will begin with roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Halter.
Here.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Here.
And Mayor Rubalcava.
Here. And now, we will continue with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask Councilmember Brown to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States of America, to the good Father, for which He stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And before we get to our special presentations, I wanted to note that, at the request of staff, formal Item 13B will not be heard tonight and will be continued to a later date to allow staff to make some revisions and return with the item. So we will not be seeing Item 13B tonight. All right, and now we will continue with our special presentations. In the week of May 15 through the 21st is the 60th Annual National Police Week, where we publicly honor the men and women who serve our community at the Ventura Police Department. And Police Chief Darren Schindler would like to add a few comments as well.
Current President of the Ventura Police Community Foundation, and she'd like to say a few words to start off.
Good evening. I have a few members of our police foundation here with us. We have Deb Golden, and we have Margarita Edson with us. So, we just wanted to come tonight before you and really just publicly thank our officers for what they do and make sure that the community is aware of next week that we're going to be having the National Police Week. I've been a resident for 22 years, and I'm proud to serve as the President of the Police Foundation. And the mission of the Police Foundation is to enhance the quality of life in our community by providing added support to the Ventura Police Department. We strive to provide resources and funding to enhance officer safety and wellness and strengthen partnerships between the community, local youth, and Ventura police. Each year, our police handle about 90,000 calls for service, often assisting residences on their worst days. The hours of behind-the-scenes training, a strong internal service-oriented culture, and the great work of these dedicated public servants does not go unnoticed. And I am honored to be here tonight to recognize them as we approach National Police Week. In honor of their service, we'll be holding a blood drive on May 17th at the Police Department from 2:30 to 6:30. So we'd be honored if you'd consider joining us and signing up for a spot at Vitalent.org to join us in saving lives in honor of our police heroes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dustin.
Madam Mayor, a few closing comments, if I might. National Police Week is a time to formally acknowledge the work of our policing professionals. Having said that, the men and women of the Ventura Police Department are some of the finest in the nation. And as your police chief, I'm very proud, couldn't be more proud to be the chief. Second, I'm inviting our council, our city council, and anybody else who might be interested in attending. Every week before National Police Week, we hold a countywide memorial ceremony at the Government Center. This week, it's on Thursday from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Victoria Avenue at Field Street. At that ceremony, we're going to honor Ventura Police Sergeant Darlin D. Dow who was killed in the line of duty August 7th, 1978. And we'd love to have you attend, and as well, members of the public. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Chief Schindler. And the week of May 15 through the 21st is also National Emergency Medical Services Week. And the 2022 theme is "Rising to the Challenge." This theme is particularly meaningful now as we are continually faced with new challenges and continue to respond, support, and care for the needs of our community. Dedicated to enhancing the quality of life and the environment through the professional delivery of emergency response, community education, and inspection services, the work of our Ventura Fire Department team is appreciated. And today, and this next week, we remain extremely proud of our EMS providers and the outstanding work that they do. Ventura Fire, thank you for your dedicated, resilient, and compassionate service. Fire Chief David N. Daya would like to add a few additional comments.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Again, I'd like to echo Chief Schindler's sentiment about the department. Very proud of the men and women of the Ventura Fire Department. I will throw in one more week that's coming up that we're in the middle of right now in EMS Week. And we have someone that oversees our EMS program. It's National Nursing Week. And I think everyone knows our nurse and our nurse educator, EMS coordinator Heather Ellis, who everyone's gotten to know over the last couple of years. So we would like to recognize her for National Nurses Week this week. It's a very celebratory week. And then her overseeing our EMS providers. We run over 20,000 unit responses a year with the support of our administrative staff and fire prevention. Extremely proud of the services we provide, both on and off duty. And I did mention this last time we spoke when I made a presentation, that with our EMS training and our skill set, we take that with us even when we're not providing service on duty. And I'm proud of the fact that the men and women of the Fire Department are there all the time, on and off duty, to be able to provide those services and that skill set anytime the community needs it, wherever they are. So again, very proud to lead the department. Thank you for your support of the department, and thank you for your recognition of their great service to the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chief N. Daya. There's lots of celebrations. We also have, May is National Building Safety Month. In 2021, our Building and Safety Division issued nearly 5,000 permits, completed over 11,000 inspections, and finalized permits for over 300 homes affected by the Thomas Fire. In observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. I ask Building Inspection Supervisor Tim Fisk to join me, to receive the proclamation. So I will read a portion of the proclamation. It says, "Now therefore, I Sofia Rubalcava, Mayor of the City of San Buenaventura, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Building Safety Month." And Tim, if you would like to say a few words?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm joined here with my fellow employees. We'd like to thank you for recognizing the 43rd Annual Building Safety Month. Building Safety Month is an international campaign that takes place in May to raise awareness about building safety. This campaign reinforces the need for adoption of modern, regularly updated building codes, and helps individuals, families, and businesses understand what it takes to create safe and sustainable structures. The employees at the City of Ventura are committed to this mission. In 2021, the city issued 4,821 building permits and performed 11,437 inspections to keep our community safe. We currently have close to 1,500 multifamily and single-family units under construction, and we are pleased to announce that we have final over 300 Thomas Fire rebuilds. These efforts are only possible with the collaborative efforts between community development, public works, and fire prevention. We'd like to thank City Council for recognizing the importance of this event and for your continued support and efforts to provide a safe city for our community.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to the whole team. It's great to see all of the team here present. So thank you so much, everybody, for being here.
Thank you.
And along with Police and EMS Week, the week of May 15 through May 21st, we also celebrate National Public Works Week, which was originally approved by Congress and proclaimed by President John F. Kennedy on July 18th, 1962. And tonight, we celebrate our own Ventura Public Works professionals who dedicate their lives as first responders in our community and provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. The city's men and women work hard to maintain our streets, infrastructure, parks, and public facilities, and provide water and wastewater utility services, and deliver projects and programs that preserve our environment, historic sites, provide recreational opportunities, and protect our water supply and coastline. I ask Public Works Director Phil Nelson and Parks and Recreation Director Nancy O'Connor and Ventura Water Pure Program Director Linda Sumansky to join me to receive or to listen to this proclamation, if you would like to come up, please. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore, I Sofia Rubalcava, Mayor of the City of San Buenaventura, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through May 21st as Public Works Week." And we have Phil Nelson, Linda Sumansky, and Nancy O'Connor. And if you would like to share a few words, you can do so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It is a pleasure to serve our great community and deliver the essential services that you mentioned. The staff is very proud and pleased to be able to serve the way that we do. You won't find a more dedicated group of professionals who just love what they do. They're truly devoted to this community, and we're just so pleased to be able to represent the team here in chambers this evening and accept the proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, to wrap up the recognition of National Public Works Week, once we have Director Nancy O'Connor speaking, we do have a brief video to play.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, we appreciate the recognition, and I can't wait for the video.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
We will now show a video of the Recent Project of the Year Award for the Arroyo Verde Park Playground Rebuild from the Ventura County Chapter of the American Public Works Association.
I am the president of Autism Society Ventura County. And when we heard about the project, we decided to become a sponsor. So Autism Society Ventura County has been sponsoring this project, and that's how I got involved.
The playground's innovative design allows families and children of all abilities and needs to play together, enjoying a variety of inclusive and accessible play structures. The playground was the product of an extensive citywide development process. Designed by Ventura-based Pacific Coast Land Design, the project development was directed by city parks and recreation staff, and informed by extensive input from the public and collaboration with physical therapists, child psychologists, parents, and children. Funding for the playground was equally collaborative with Ventura City Funds, supported by major donations from multiple foundations, nonprofits, and individuals throughout the community, all managed by the Ventura Community Parks Foundation.
Right off the bat, we had so much positive response that it made our job so easy. And it came from all walks, all walks of the community. And I think it just resonated with them that they were going to be part of, you know, a real legacy project to make something that hadn't existed before.
The 10,000-square-foot playground includes merry-go-rounds, slides, swings, and climbing structures, all readily accessible by children in wheelchairs and others with special needs. The thoroughly redesigned site also includes a sensory garden, planting areas, walking paths, concrete sidewalks, accessible drinking fountains and restrooms, updated ADA parking, and much more. For the families and children who have been involved from the start, and for the entire Ventura community, the rebirth of the Arroyo Verde site as an all-inclusive playground is an absolute dream come true.
Are you ready to have fun?
Yeah.
Who's ready for the inclusive playground?
Yeah.
Say, "Yeah!"
Yeah!
Thank you for being a friend.
From our local chapter, the local chapter president from the American Public Works Association.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor Rubalcava and council members. My name is Andrew Grubb, Principal Civil Engineer for the City of Camarillo, and this year's Director-at-Large for the Ventura County Chapter of the American Public Works Association, APWA. I am here tonight on behalf of APWA, a nationwide organization comprised of over 30,000 professionals with the common goal of improving public infrastructure in communities across the U.S. Our local chapter has over 300 members and is one of the most active branches in the country. As we celebrate National Public Works Week this month, we'd like to take the time to recognize and bring to light the hard work of our public works personnel by presenting this year's Project of the Year Awards. On behalf of the APWA Ventura County Chapter, I am pleased to be joined with the Public Works Director Phil Nelson to present the 2021 APWA Project of the Year Award in the Structures category to the City of Ventura for the Arroyo Verde Park Playground Rebuild Project. This award highlights the focused efforts of the city's Ventura's Public Works Department to improve our community. This project is just one of the many the department delivers as part of their capital improvement program, making the city a better place to live and work. This project stood out for its inclusive play area, with unique considerations to children with sensory and cognitive needs, for its community partnership through design workshops and donations received for its replacement, and the team's resilience getting the project to completion despite numerous supply chain issues caused by COVID-19. It was clear that this project could not have been complete without the strong leadership of city council, combined with the hard work of the Public Works Department staff, consultants, and contractors who all contributed to this project's success. With that, I would like to again congratulate the City of Ventura for receiving this distinguished award.
One other person that we would like to introduce and to thank is Eric Berg. Come on over here, Eric. Eric is with Pacific Coast Land Design. This actually goes to him.
Doesn't. But thank you all. We're so honored to have been part. It's our job to just make these dreams come a reality for the cities and the people we work with. I'm just one small piece of a very large team that includes the people standing to the left of me, people that aren't here tonight that made this come a reality. And really, it's a gift to the City of Ventura. It's not. So this is for you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It's absolutely well deserved. I've been out there myself a few times, and every time I'm there, it's busy with a lot of kids playing, families together. So it's a beautiful space. And if you have not seen it, I would encourage you to go and take a look at the park. It's beautiful. So thank you for the recognition, and thank you for all of the hard work. All right, and now we will continue with a special presentation with Beacon, the Beach Erosion Authority for Clean Oceans and Nourishments. And we will listen to a 10-minute presentation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mark Baylor. I'm the Executive Director of Beacon, and actually follow one of your former colleagues, Brian Brennan, as Executive Director of Beacon, who served for many years. Very pleased to be here tonight. I'm actually representing the Board of Beacon and the Board Chair, Greg Hart, who would like to be here tonight. He's presenting at the City of Carpinteria. So why Beacon? As you all know, and you've heard this many times, in the absence of additional management actions, we're going to lose one to two-thirds of our beaches for a variety of factors, but primarily to changes in climate, sea level rise, and other extreme events. So I want to give a short presentation. I think I timed it at 9:58. Who we are, what we do, how we do it, and why it matters. So who we are? We're you. Beacon is a joint powers authority of the two counties of Ventura and Santa Barbara, and the six coastal cities of Goleta, Santa Barbara, Carpinteria, Ventura, Pointe Guanimi, and Oxnard. And we have 10 members representing the eight-member agencies, because the counties actually receive two votes. The structure of Beacon is very direct and very efficient. We have a board, as I mentioned, two supervisors, one city council. We formed an executive committee in the last two years in order to kind of build our momentum as a partner with our local member agencies, including the City of Ventura. And we formed a science advisory committee. Beacon's had a very long history of bringing the best available science to the policy process in order to address regional beach erosion, beach nourishment, coastal restoration, and sea level rise adaptation. And as I mentioned, we develop scientific-based, resilient programs, really in partnership with our local member agencies, remembering that we're not a regulatory agency. We don't duplicate any regulatory activities of any of the member agencies. We're completely voluntary membership. Next slide, please. So we have a series of very long-term coastal restoration projects that Beacon's been partnering with its member agencies. And I'm just going to, you can read this slide, but I'll just mention a couple of them that are really 30, 40-year-old projects where we're trying to build resilience and change the shape of the shoreline. And one of our major involvements, which we'll talk about a little later, is the Surfers Point project at the Rivermouth. Phase 1 is complete. It's been in operation for 10 years. We've studied it to understand what the impacts have been, and it's been very successful. And now we stand on the precipice of funding Phase 2. So how do we do our work? We're a partner. We're a coordinator. We're a collaborator. And I said, we're not a top-down-forcing organization. We're really a consensus-based organization. But we're really focused on how can we gather the best data and build the best projects. And I was really pleased to see the presentation on Arroyo Verde, because even though it's a different focus, we're trying to build whole coastal access projects that address all issues: access for underrepresented communities, recreational, and then ongoing environmental values. Right, please. So why does Beacon matter? I mentioned it matters because we've already understood that there's changes along the coastline. Coastal erosion has been a problem in the City of Ventura since the '60s, and for other parts of the coastline since the '40s documented. But it's really an ongoing problem, and we need ongoing solutions. We need long-term approaches, again, based on the best science. And, okay, thank you. So what is our real impact and our value added? Beacon is run by member dues, including the City of Ventura. Our dues run about $300,000 a year now. We've leveraged in the last year and a half almost $1 million and a half. And one of the projects I want to mention is the Surfers Point project, because we partnered with the city to manage the grant from the Ocean Protection Council successfully with the city to finish the planning. So I will conclude with some comments just about why Beacon should be part of your portfolio for planning shoreline and coastal restoration, because the problems you face are not limited to your jurisdiction. They're regional. And if you look back at the map, you'll see, in the absence of regional coordination, the ability to plan and successfully build resilient shorelines will be significantly impacted. I have a couple of slides I want to show, but in the interest of time, if you would just advance the slide. Go ahead. So the last thing I want to mention is, every project we do has to fit into an overall plan. So we actually have a regional coastal sediment management plan, and we're going to update that plan for the best science as we do periodically. So we need updated, best available science. We need best policy pathways, and we need cooperative institutions for governance like Beacon. That's a commercial. Thank you. So the last thing I wanted to mention is, this slide is actually somewhat old. I said we're about $1.4 million in leverage just in the last year and a half. We've been very successful in shepherding and husbanding the money that's given as dues to leverage and magnify that. The OPC grant was about a $400,000 grant for final planning for Surfers Point. Slide, please. Thank you. And I just want to say again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know your agenda is really packed tonight. Beacon only comes here periodically to report on its progress, but we would be happy to report on our activities and accomplishments at whatever pace the city council would like us to attend. Thank you again very much.
Thank you very much. Very informative, and we appreciate your presentation. Thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda is our closed session report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. We did have closed session tonight on the item that was agendized, and there's no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have City Council Communications and Reports. Councilmember Brown?
Yes, as a chair of the GPAC, we have an update, and I'll allow my co-chair Doug Halter to give a little information on that very quickly, because I wanted to speak about something else. I just wanted to report out that I was at the SCAG conference this past week, and I went to a session called Bridging the Digital Divide, Getting to Universal Broadband. And that was on Thursday, May 5. And I wanted to share all the information I got with you guys. It won't be tonight, but I just wanted to let you know that I learned a lot of different interesting things that can help contribute to our conversation about broadband in the City of Ventura. Some of those terms I've learned is dark fiber, overbuilding, middle-mile networks, last-mile connectivity, regional partnerships, Pacific Coast Digital Broadband Consortium, and the Broadband Act for All. So I would like to have the opportunity to get more in-depth in that in the future, but I just want to let you know that we are on the right track. I think from what I heard, it's really important for us to establish, much like when we do our budget cycle and we develop the guiding principles, I think it's really important as we move forward with getting broadband is that we establish our guiding principles, like why we're doing it. Or we're doing it because we want to make sure broadband is accessible to everyone, especially those in disadvantaged communities, and we want it to be at competitive prices. And if that is a true statement, then that helps lead and guide who we choose to provide those services and, you know, the terms of whatever contract we end up in or a long-term agreement. So having said that, I'll conclude, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Now we have Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Did you want to go?
Okay, I'll go ahead. Sorry. Good evening. I did just want to mention a couple of things. First of all, recognize that yesterday was Mother's Day. So Happy Mother's Day to all the moms, soon-to-be moms, people who are mother figures as well. And also recognize that tomorrow is Latin American Mother's Day. So Happy Mother's Day to our Latina moms. And then wanted to mention that our K-9 unit will be doing a meet and greet this Friday, May 13th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Jaguar Land Rover in Ventura. This will be a fun evening with appetizers, K-9 demos, K-9 merchandise, and an opportunity to meet all the Ventura PD K-9 units. So anyone wants to join the Puffers? I know I do. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios. Now we have Deputy Mayor Schrader, followed by Councilmember Halter.
Perfect timing that Beacon is here. This morning, I met with Congressman Salud Garbalal, the Surf Rider Foundation, and many others down at Surfers Point to show the congressmen what Phase 1 looked like and how wildly successful it is, and to demonstrate that that's what we can do with a managed retreat strategy instead of keep throwing money in some other communities or putting walls up. And I just, I'm so impressed with the approach, and I don't think we could have done that without Beacon and some of their science behind that. Last time I was at Surfers Point with a group, I think there were four PhDs there that were looking at Phase 1 and what had happened over the last 10 years. It's now being used as an example down the entire west coast of the United States. So we got to grab some funding, probably at a federal and state level, and finish out Surfers Point. And I think then Ventura can lead from the front. So Public Works was there as well, Phil and some of his people. It was a pretty impressive showing. So thanks for everything.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schrader. And now we have Councilmember Halter, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on what Councilmember Brown had mentioned, is that she's the chair and I'm the vice chair of the GPAC Committee, and we're having a very important meeting. All of them are important, but this one's really getting into the heart of the matter. It's going to be all about land use, and we're doing something different. Last month was our first time that we actually met in person. It's much different in person. I think the last two years, a lot of us can attest to, it's probably the longest 30 years of my life, not having anything but Zoom to have meetings on. So doing it in person is a lot more engaging. It's a lot more fun, if you will. And on May 16th and 17th, we're going to be meeting two days in a row, because it's all about breaking down into smaller groups and discussing land use and land use planning all across the city. So please attend. Public's welcome. And, pardon? Two meetings, yeah, May 16th and May 17th. So back-to-back at 6:00 p.m. until 8:30 at night. So it's very important, though. It's all about land use in our community. So it's going to dictate what we do in the next 20 or 30 years. So you're all welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Halter. And now we have Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. A number of things. Tomorrow, I'll be at the Montalvo Community Council, but it's a Zoom meeting. If anybody's interested, it should be a good meeting. It starts at 6:30. There are a lot of things on the agenda. I'll be talking about what we're discussing at the Declining Enrollment Committee for the school district, and also what exactly might be going on with the expansion of freight rail in Montalvo. Wednesday, I will be at Rincon Brewery at 6:30, if anybody would like to join me. As is usual at Rincon, if you ride the bus or walk, I will buy you a beverage. I've had a number of these community meet and greets, and they're always wonderful. On Saturday, May 14th, from 10 to noon, we'll be doing the second Saturday District 3 cleanup. We'll meet in front of Pete's Coffee on Victoria. But Mayor, I have to share what has been weighing on me, and that is that yesterday, my wife and son and I watched a man die on the side of the road. He'd been hit by a car. And we got there right after it happened. And you know, my wife's a doctor. And you know, my wife's a doctor, so we stopped and we tried to help. And he... He and his wife had gone to a nursery to look at the plants on Mother's Day. And on their way back, he wanted to pick some wildflowers for her. And, you know, you do what you can, but his injuries were grievous. And so I'd like to thank the Encinitas Fire Department and their paramedics, speaking of EMS week, and the San Diego County sheriffs for doing everything that they could. You know, we talk about heroes, and I think sometimes we need the reminder that, you know, pulling somebody out of a burning car is really a rare thing. But for our first responders, you know, it's a regular part of their job that they are there when somebody is having the worst day of their life. And I want to thank the fellow, and I didn't get his name, who tried CPR and then worked to comfort the man's wife. I've mentioned this before, but you know, pedestrian deaths are skyrocketing in the United States. After decades, decades of bringing them down over the last 12 years, they have skyrocketed, and we now have the highest number of pedestrian deaths than we've had in 30 years. Pedestrian deaths have gone up 50% in the last 12 years. And there are some things we know. We know that distracted driving is part of it. We know that vehicle size is part of it. You know, some of these new trucks that people are driving and modifying, they don't have a lot of visibility. And they also weigh so much. I mean, when we talk about an accident that is car versus pedestrian or car versus bike, nobody asks who won. It's interesting, because in the last two years, the number of deaths have really gone up. And this is despite the fact that Americans have been driving less. And that is because speed kills. And there have been less people on the road, so people have been driving faster. So more people are dying. You know, we, as a city, in a typical year, we have a couple pedestrian deaths. And along with the factors I mentioned, the simple fact is, we still continue to build our city and build our infrastructure, assuming that everybody will be driving and that they'll be driving a little two- or four-door sedan. And we need to confront the reality as we make decisions about how we operate in the city. And so, thank you for the opportunity to share that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. And I'm sorry to hear about the pedestrian. Our condolences go out to the family of the victim. And we continue with our city council communications. I just wanted to offer some information during the last regular council meeting of April 25th. Some of our council protocols were not adhered to. And really, our protocols are meant to provide guardrails to keep our meetings on track. And we have all, as a council, agreed to operate within those protocols. So as the mayor, it is my responsibility to enforce these protocols to ensure that our meetings remain civil and that all participants have the same opportunity to express their opinions on the items being considered by this council. And so going forward, I plan to use the gavel more effectively to better manage our city council meetings and maintain an environment where city council members and our guests, during our proceedings, feel comfortable in coming forward and sharing their valuable perspectives with us. And so our meetings should be a forum for thoughtful and respectful dialogue that result in effective democracy. And so I am also asking the city manager and the city attorney to prepare a presentation for our protocols for an upcoming meeting in June. I think it's important that we, as a council, review them and question them and propose changes to them where necessary. So I look forward to that review of our council protocols in June, just so that we can all understand them better. And next, we have our city manager communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can, a couple of things to share with the council and with the audience today. There is a community bike ride scheduled on May 21 at 9:00 a.m. The community is invited to join Ventura Mayor Sofia Rubicava, local officials, the city of Ventura, and Caltrans for community bike ride. The free event starts at 9:00 a.m. at West Park Community Center on the west side. As you may know, May is National Bike Month, and this is an opportunity to celebrate the $5 million Clean California Grant awarded to the city of Ventura for the River Trail Project. Improvements to the Ventura River Trail include repaving the bike trail, adding solar lighting, and removing and replacing trail fencing. Target improvements include accessibility improvements to access the trail, public art, trail monuments, environmental and no litter signage, native and drought-tolerant shrubs, tree plantings, trashcans, wayfinding, and other amenities. Bike ride participants are encouraged to RSVP and can do so by visiting the city's website. On another matter, I want to thank everyone who has participated in the April council meeting to share input about what's happening with the apartments at Center and Cedar, as well as to ask for help related to an emergency tenant protection ordinance. As directed by the city council, city staff is preparing an emergency tenant protection ordinance that would provide a process to ensure the state law is related to the substantial renovations is being adhered to. The topic will be discussed at a special council meeting. The council set a deadline of May 23, and we're struggling with forming a quorum. But the week of May 23, we will have that meeting. It will be a special meeting dedicated solely to the proposed ordinance. And we will, and once we know the specific date of the meeting, we will make sure the neighbors and the neighborhood are fully informed. On another matter, if I can, I want to provide an, I'm going to ask Peter Gilli, our community development director, to provide an update on the city's housing element and our letter we received from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Peter?
So in late January, our council adopted the six-cycle housing element. And a couple weeks ago, as noted, we received a written comment back from HCD, which is the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And last week, I was on a call with HCD with our consultant, our consultant from Veronica Tam and Associates. HCD found that while much of our housing element complies with state law, they did identify areas where more information or commitments were necessary to bring the document into full compliance. We will be working with HCD to get the document to, up to full compliance. And we do expect that that will require adding or expanding what the objectives are in the document. And for that reason, we expect that we will bring the revised draft back to Planning Commission and to council for its readoption in this year. But since HCD does support the objectives that are in the housing element at this time, we do intend to still move forward with implementation while we are working on the housing element on parallel tracks. There, in case council's concerned about not having full compliance on the last round that we turned in, when I checked the HCD's website as of last Friday, of the 98 cities in Ventura and LA County, four have been found to have compliant housing elements. Those four happened to all be in LA County. And those who are fully compliant appear to have gone through at least three rounds, and we've gone through two. So our target will be to make this next round our final as well. If you do have any other questions about this, please don't hesitate to contact me, and we can discuss this further.
Thank you, Peter. If I can, and then my final comment is for the upcoming council meetings. As you know, this council met May 3 to discuss the proposed budget that was shared with you. And we have two more meetings scheduled to further review the proposed budget. May 23 will be our next budget workshop. The council asked us last week to come back with a couple of specific target items to focus on, and we will bring that information back to the council on the 23. And should all go well on the 23, we are scheduled on June 13 for the budget adoption. So we have certainly plenty of time, and certainly the public. We encourage you to weigh in on the budget with the items that are there that are of interest to you. And I believe, Madam Mayor, that's all I have for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McIntyre. And so with that, we will continue with public communications. How many communications do we have?
Okay, Madam Mayor, we have received 20 speaker cards.
All right, I think we will go ahead and reduce the time for each speaker. We'll do a minute and a half for each speaker.
Okay, our first speaker is going to be Avijan Day, and Avijan will be followed by Jenny Buckingham.
Do you want to introduce Dario? Good evening, Mayor Rubicava, city council members and staff. My name is Jenny Buckingham, and I am a proud member of the SEIU 721 bargaining team. I've worked for the city of Ventura for 20 years and 39 days today. As of today, I am a longtime resident of the city, both when I was in my youth and now. I'm here tonight to ask the city council to check in with the city negotiators and hold them accountable for the manner in which they started our current bargaining proceedings. As a city employee, I've worked through numerous challenges, the La Conchita mudslide, the Thomas Fire, the rainstorms, and now, of course, the pandemic health crisis. I've seen massive financial hits to frontline workers that resulted in losses of hours to avoid layoffs. And I've seen city staff step up to do their part by taking furlough and giving up hundreds of leave-time hours to help the city get back on track when the chips were down. So on April 26, it was incredibly disheartening to have engaged in a bargaining session with city negotiators only to be shut down, effectively dropping a concrete wall between us. We diligently prepared, and we showed up with 19 well-thought-out proposals. In no more than 15 minutes, city negotiators rejected all but three proposals without explanation. Some of those rejected proposals were non-economic and all warranted a response. This is my fourth time sitting on an SEIU bargaining team, and I have never witnessed such disrespectful start to negotiations. City workers deserve better. Our SEIU 721 bargaining team showed up to make conditions better and to help strengthen our community with better services. What we got was disrespect. We're asking the city council to put city negotiators back on track so we can continue to bargain in a way that is respectful and productive. It's in all our interests to come up with a collaborative agreement that reflects fairness and shows that you value the sacrifices and continuing work of our members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Buckingham.
Our next speaker is Jenny Buckingham, followed by Dani Correa. And Dani Correa, followed by Helena Loyan.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and city staff. My name is Avian Day. I'm a management analyst here at the city of Ventura, a position I've been in for four years now. I am also a proud SEIU member and part of the bargaining team. Jenny Buckingham just pointed out some of the many challenges that she's faced. She's been with this organization for over 20 years. And while I haven't gone through some of the events that she's gone through, I see that the city, right now, is dealing with a significant recruitment and retention challenge. City workers, as you know, are continuously leaving to join other nearby Ventura County cities. And I believe that this is due to our failure as a city to provide comparable benefits and compensation. I am certain that as we continue this bargaining process, we're going to find that we have a lot of common interests. Chief among those interests is our desire to improve the city's retention and recruitment. We don't want our city to turn into a revolving door where experienced, knowledgeable city workers are leaving for nearby cities. And new workers are coming in only for a few years to gain the experience they need to then move on to a nearby city that offers them a better compensation package. That, as you all know, is a recipe for disaster. We ask, therefore, that in this bargaining process, please respect us. Help us better protect our Ventura residents and help us improve this beautiful Ventura community by showing up and considering the needs of your workforce, and also by providing us with the bargaining process we deserve. I know that if we do so, it will benefit us all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Day.
And now we have Dani Correa, followed by Helena Loyan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council. Dani Correa, SEIU 721 Regional Director. And I'm here to add my comments to what you already heard. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge that the recognition that you gave your city staff, who many happen to be our members. But remember, they need resources, and they need the tools to be able to continue to do their job. I'd like to also point out that when this city was going through worse financial times, it was SEIU 721 that stepped up and met at the table to work collaboratively on how to save jobs and keep facilities, the services intact. It has been SEIU 721 that helps pass revenue-enhancing measures so that not just city residents will enjoy our beautiful city, but the many tourists that come our way. Let me add that SEIU 721 wants to make sure that these resources are well-spent, efficiently, and are in the best interest for all employees and city taxpayers. We're not sure that that's being currently done. As you heard, retention and recruitment problems lead to instability and overworked workforce. To be shut down at the negotiating table so quickly is really a reflection on you all. Can we count on your support for your employees, our members? Is this really the way you want to see negotiations proceed? We hope that our message tonight will resonate with you all, and you'll respond to our requests for help. One last question. Can we afford more long-term employees with institutional knowledge to leave this city to another jurisdiction because of current working conditions? We think not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Correa.
Helen Loyan, followed by Pedro Guzman.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Helena Loyan, and my comments today are a reflection of the conflict which arises when code-compliance measures and objective review procedures are not in place. What is occurring on Center Street could be rectified by the affirmation of a building inspector and code-compliance staff. Our community is merely asking council to implement common sense solutions to close loopholes posed by the Tenant Protection Act. By requiring verification of tenant relocation and evidence of substantial renovation, we can bypass issues of efficacy concerning no-fault evictions. The community is not asking for frivolous regulations just for the administration to abide by the spirit of the law, which inherently protects tenants and property owners. Building in checks and balances with code enforcement would assure existing tenants that the bad apples have not spoiled the bunch. Applying this remedy to future impending building applications, such as a Center Street project, will ensure the rights of renters are protected while still allowing property owners to take care of their properties. And I have to say, a minute and a half is not enough time to advocate for rights that are so important, such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loyan.
Okay, our next speaker is Pedro Guzman, followed by Luis Conchas.
Good evening. And thank you, because you want to help us. I'm one of those who's going to be evicted soon. And I hope we can find a solution. Not just for us, but all the common generations. Who have become victims of eviction. And the decision you take. Could avoid. That a lot of us leaves this city and go far away. Because we're being evicted. I thank you. And I hope everything is in benefit of everybody who works here. And I hope everything is in benefit of everybody who works here. And all the minorities, which is the ones who suffer the most. Thank you. And I hope, with all my heart, that the best decision is taken for Ventura city's future. Thank you very much.
Gracias, señor Guzman. Thank you, Mr. Guzman, and thank you, interpreter.
Okay, our next speaker is Luis Conchas, followed by Maria Felix.
Buenas tardes, señores consulares.
Good evening.
Feliz día de las mañanas. Ya pasó el domingo, pero la latinas es mañana.
It was Sunday, but for Latin, it's tomorrow.
Oh, lo que vengo a pedir yo es que tengan más protecciones acerca de los desalojos que estamos viviendo en la vivienda de la Center Street.
On Central Street.
Y este, pues, que abran su corazón.
Open your hearts.
Que nosotros acabamos de pasar, no, 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 nosotros muchas de las personas de todos nosotros acabamos de pasar por una pandemia. Fue mundial, nosotros lo sufrimos.
And we suffered it.
Y no tenemos dinero para poder encontrar otra, otra locación por el momento. Les pido que tomen consideraciones y nos apoyen.
So take us into consideration, please, and support us. Thank you.
Gracias, señor Conchas. Thank you, Mr. Conchas.
Okay, our next speaker is Maria Felix, followed by Juan Alvarez.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es María.
Good evening.
Nuevamente, mil disculpas por venir a molestarlos, y gracias por su atención.
I apologize for bothering you. Thank you for your attention.
Y pedirles, de favor,
And ask you
que hagan protecciones hacia nuestro desalojo.
Have protections against our evictions.
Sí, aplica la reforma del OBI, seamos beneficiados.
That if the OBI reform applies to benefit us.
Y que si el dueño, en realidad,
And if the owner
nos compruebe con hechos que supuestamente el edificio está inhabitable.
That we cannot be in that building.
Que podamos asegurarnos nosotros que vivimos, para nosotros no está inhabitable. Y algo que estamos seguros en que, como él dice, que no sea un desalojo injusto, y principalmente
We want it not to be an unfair eviction.
Espero su comprensión, y que algún día Yo sé que ustedes, no puedo decirles ni faltarles al respeto. Simplemente, a lo mejor quizás hay personas, hay dueños de negocios que tienen empleados latinos, que saben los sufrimientos que hemos tenido. Y espero que abran su corazón, y nos entiendan, y nos apoyen.
And I hope you can understand us and support us.
Y les agradezco infinitamente su atención y por atendernos de nuevo.
And I really thank you for listening to us.
Gracias, señora Felix. Thank you, Ms. Felix.
Madam Mayor, can we request that there's a pause in between the translation and the talking? Because I don't hear anything.
Yeah, I want to make sure they don't talk on the microphone.
Yeah, you can either do simultaneous, but the speaker would have to be not on the mic. Or you can do consecutive, and we can do twice as much time.
Okay.
Okay, our next speaker is Juan Alvarez, followed by Elvira Alvarez.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Juan Alvarez, and I'm currently a tenant at the Casa del Pueblo apartment. Well, yes, we continue to ask, well, I thank you for keeping on top of our case. I know you're very busy on other cases, but thank you. And we keep asking for your assistance, your help into this matter, because, you know, time's coming up, and, well, well, like I said, the word "help" comes out a lot, you know, because really, you know, like, everybody here, you know, Ventura, you know, the rental properties and stuff, but, yep, that's the word that's coming out, "help." And I can say right now, I've been living there for 18 years, and, like, that place is fine, you know, and I work in construction, you know, so. And we've been keeping on top of, if anything needed fixing, we kept on top of it. We call the property manager and everything, and, like, like, through the years, you know, it's been maintained. And, like I said, I ask for proof that the work that needs to be done is more than 30 days, and that we actually need to move out, you know? If it takes more than 30 days, because there's the work, you know, to show proof that we need to be out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Okay, our next speaker is Elvira Alvarez, followed by Yolanda Alvarez.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Elvira Álvarez.
Good evening, my name is Elvira Álvarez.
Y pues estamos aquí para seguir pidiendo de su ayuda, su protección para
And we're here to ask for your help again, your protection, to not be evicted from Casa del Pueblo.
Pues ahora sí, este... Es muy difícil, seguimos buscando.
It is very difficult, we're still looking.
Más ahorita estamos en sosobra. Estamos en una tensión sosobra porque
But right now, we're worried.
Ahorita se está hablando que quizá venga una recepción.
Tense, because we're hearing that we might have a
Y nosotros, recepción económica.
An economic recession?
En todo país, y nosotros en el doloroso ya vivimos esto.
And we already went through this in 2008.
Fue muy difícil, y más con esta situación del desalojo.
It was very difficult, especially with this eviction situation.
Y pues estamos pidiendo que, pues, ahora sí que, que no más estamos en sus manos de ustedes.
So we're asking you, where are your hands?
Y pedimos protección.
We're asking for protection?
Para no ser desalojados.
To not be evicted?
También esta orden reactiva para la casa mi pueblo.
And to make this order retroactive for Casa mi pueblo.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening to us, for your time. Thank you.
Gracias, señor Alvarez. Thank you, Ms. Alvarez.
Okay, our next speaker is Yolanda Alvarez, followed by Matt Bello.
Good afternoon. Okay, I'm here to, once again, ask for everyone's help, Mr. Doug and Janet, to consider this. There's so many things to say in so much little time, but to consider the kids that are living there, that they, most of them couldn't come today because they're already struggling about, we have to move out in a week or so. And hearing Mr. Gilly at the last meeting at the community center. Sorry, it just, it hurts to be up here and trying to convince everyone to help us because there's not a lot of people out there supporting this. And I just hope it touches your heart in helping all of us. There's a lot of people that need help. Just make this retroactive so everybody out there gets the help, not just us, but there's other people in the community that need this help. Because not all of us want to end up in the street with kids asking anybody else for help. But I just, please, touch your heart and help us, and make this the best decision for all of us, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez.
Okay, our next speaker is Matt Bello, followed by Clary Rudd.
Okay, council, good evening. It's good to see everyone. I just wanted to say a couple things. First of all, I want to say I really appreciated the discussion that happened at the last meeting. I think it was a really deep and thorough discussion, and it really demonstrated how seriously you guys are taking this. And I know how busy you are and to make the priority right now for this. It really, it means a lot to our community. Another thing I wanted to talk about, a lot of members were, our community members were upset at the West Side Community Council about some of the comments that were made. I don't want to hold any judgment right now, but I did send you guys a long letter with some of my concerns. So please check that out and let me know if you have any questions about that. And additionally, as I've said since day one, I'm not in a position to throw any accusations towards the sonar at all. I'm just looking for an objective protocol that demonstrates evidence. I just think that that will be good for our city, for everyone, and that that will be fair. But I am curious, I'm just somewhat curious, you know? I did notice that the city manager report did omit the request of Mr. Friedman about, Mr. Friedman was pretty emphatic right before the motion vote about whether or not the owner was still going to allow someone to go and visit the property. And we haven't heard anything about that, so I was curious if that was just forgotten in the report or if that actually happened or not. Because it seemed that Mr. Gilly was pretty confident that the owner was confident about the situation. I just was wondering why that hadn't happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bello.
Okay, our next speaker is Clary Rudd, followed by Richard Rosen.
City council, city manager, mayor, like I'm at the principal's office. So, my name is Clary Rudd. So it goes, you don't know what you've got till it's gone. I hope, then we go shop, make a book. Couple weeks ago, we found out we had a new owner who then announced rent freeze of 350%, which is very earth-shaking. I am very pro small business Ventura. I've owned most of the businesses in Ventura over the years with the restaurants. I have been to, ate at, made free restaurants, trying to show respect to them. Last two years, I was chairman of the downtown Ventura organization. I only chairman for six years. I served on the national board, just met finally after three years. Soon, he needs a late term. He needs when Ukraine announced to us they were under attack. We work with Ukraine. My main request is maybe downtown. We need a committee for small business to try to protect Ventura's small business. And I hope some solution comes up, make a book.
Thank you, Mr. Rudd.
Okay, our next speaker is Richard Rosen, followed by Liz Campos.
I'll sleep like the old one. You related to David, or any of the two trees? So 23 million, 92 million should be going to our streets, yes? Friedman, I've emailed you. Ms. Brown, I've emailed you. Didn't receive one back yet. I just want to know why our streets are so bad, that's all. Just fix them. I've lived here since '74. It's atrocious. Okay, I don't, what we got, since 2017, we're supposed to be out in Ventura County, $218 million. $92 million are to fund just our streets. I've seen you guys take, what, Telegraph? And you split it down from three lanes to two. You had a huge bike lane there now, over there by Saratoga, or, sorry, the park. And no one rides in that bike lane. So it's now adjusted, and it's a great street, it's nice paved. But how about Bristol, Remeli Ralston, Thompson, any of those streets, bad? I mean, I'm driving my truck one day and just, I feel like I'm forebiding. That's all I'm saying, is just fix our streets, please. This is a great city. Lived here for, pretty much forever, except for when I was in the military. And just like you guys to do that stuff, all right? Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Okay, our next speaker is Liz Campos, followed by Alex Garcia.
Good evening. It's hard to do in a minute and a half because I want to be slow enough for the interpreter. Tonight, you heard from your own employees. You heard from Mr. Rudd about small businesses suffering. You've heard from some of the tenants on the avenue. That doesn't even touch the tip of the iceberg of how many of us are being evicted and how many Airbnbs are going in. We're not all the CEO of the trade desk, or the CEO of the city, or the planning director who have enough income to purchase a home. I know a lot of our council members are not wealthy. This weekend in the newspaper, we saw the story of a council member in Ojai who may be booted out of her district seat because of a lack of affordable housing. Sometime in the next few weeks, you have the authority and the power to establish protections for tenants in this city. And I know it's a hard decision to make, and you have to think about many options and many ideas. But Ventura depends on the working class. So let's keep them welcome here, keep the businesses running, keep your own employees happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campos.
Our next speaker is Alex Garcia, followed by Leslie Purcell.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Alex Garcia. I am the community organizer with CAUZ here in Ventura. And I just wanted to express my gratitude first for your leadership at the last council meeting to consider passing a local ordinance that's going to protect our tenants, the tenants that are here that just spoke facing eviction. But I want to ask you to not be complacent. We need to ensure that this policy is retroactive and that it does everything, that you do everything in your power to protect these families. Because just requiring permits doesn't guarantee anything. Owners need to be able to prove that repairs are actually needed. And we need this ordinance to actually protect tenants who are being victims of this outrageous housing market, and also the investors who are seeing this as a way to raise rent, basically as much as they want. What we don't want is to create yet another loophole to make it okay to evict tenants by just adding another checkbox. And I know I have still some time, but it's just really hard to hear. I don't know if you all felt that last time, and to still see some pushback from some of the council members, it's really disheartening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Our next speaker is Leslie Purcell, followed by Christian Nunez.
Good evening, council. It's nice to be back here. I would appreciate a lot of the comments that were made, and I know housing is a huge issue. A lot of what seems to be going up recently, it looks very large, and I am afraid a lot of it is very expensive. So we need to think about how we're doing housing and make it affordable, and also have some setbacks and well-designed buildings. I'm actually here to speak to you on another topic, which is Measures A and B. And there's been a lot of misinformation in the public. I've done a little canvassing this weekend on the west side, and people are confused that the signs that are up say it's going to be an energy shutdown, and it's not true. Measures A and B will protect our drinking water supply, will have some environmental oversight, for the first time, really, over oil drilling. They've had old permits in the past and have been able to continue to drill as close to residences and schools as they can. And so now, the Board of Supervisors instituted some regulations with their general plan update, and we would ask for a yes vote on Measures A and B to continue to have that kind of environmental oversight over new oil well drilling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purcell.
Our next speaker is Christian Nunez, followed by Glenn Overly.
Good evening, city council. So my name is Christian Nunez, but today I'm actually going to be relaying a message from Sebastian Conchas. He's an eleventh grader here in Ventura. He can be present, so I'll just be giving his message. And he says, if I was here today to speak, and I'm not even sure if my testimony would matter much to the city council, but if this was matter much to the City Council, but if this was the case, I wouldn't want to be here in person to see the faces of the City Council of Ventura, the city where I was born and raised. I would feel embarrassed for trying to raise my voice to express to you how these evictions are affecting my life. I feel betrayed by the city I have called home these past 17 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nunez.
Okay, our next speaker is Glenn Overly. Glenn, we're going to move you over as a panelist now. You should have control over your mic and camera, and Glenn will be followed by Maria Navarro.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Thank you. Greetings, Madam Mayor and Council. The trip to DC has created a black eye for our city and has further undermined the trust and respect each of you deserve for serving our community. This was an easy Brown Act violation to understand. What is most frustrating to me and other citizens is the fact that the city cannot be transparent about their pre-arranged meetings with Congress and others to discuss city business. This was not social, and the public has the right to understand what occurred. What this trip demonstrates is the fact that the tail is wagging the dog. To rectify this situation, Council should do two things. First, hold a separate public meeting to clearly outline dates, times, and content of all meetings and subject matter. All persons who attended these meetings should be identified. The meeting location, including office numbers, should be identified. Second, and I do not take this lightly, the city manager should resign his post or be fired. A city manager should not be given legal advice when a city attorney is available. This is not the only issue with our city manager, but it is the straw that breaks the camel's back. The fact that our city manager accepts responsibility for a crime he cannot be held accountable for is meaningless. The fact remains that those who attended the DC trip are violators of the Brown Act, regardless of who takes ceremonial credit. We need to hold our city manager accountable. How many employees have left our city over the city manager? This is not the only thing he has done. Please hold him accountable. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Maria Navarro. Maria, we're bringing you over now, and Maria will be followed by Trevor Gottman.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Ruacaba, City Council members and staff. I'm grateful that you voted unanimously last council meeting to put forth an ordinance to help protect tenants in Casa de Pablo and future tenants from, you know, these types of substantial remodel evictions. But we have to make sure that the ordinance that is being proposed is one that will actually cover tenants and prevent landlords from incorrectly using the loophole granted by the state law. To me, this is a very simple matter. The state law came into effect in January 2020 and creates a protection for these substantial remodel evictions because they were being used so frequently to raise rents at market rate. The result was the gradual displacement of low-income communities all over California. The state law defines substantial remodel as work that will displace a tenant for more than 30 days. However, the big flaw in law, not only this section, but all of 1482, is that there's no enforcement mechanism. So we expect the tenants to fight their eviction through the courts. That would be fine if there were plenty of apartment units available, and if there were pro bono lawyers actually willing to take on these cases. The reality is, there aren't. This is precisely what the gap, the gap that the city government should fill. What we're asking from you is to make sure that the ordinance that is brought up will make sure that the landlords are property owners, make sure that the ordinance, sorry, make sure that the ordinance that is brought up to you, yeah, follow the law, right? So that the property owners follow the law, that the only, that they evict only if the renovation meet the requirements. And, you know, we do not want to create a bureaucratic process that will, at the end, not be useful for any of the tenants or the landlord. We want real oversight of this law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro.
Okay, our next speaker is Trevor Gottman. Trevor, we're bringing you over now, and Trevor will be followed by our last speaker, Patty Overly.
Good evenings, Madam Mayor, City Council, public, everybody, city staff, everybody. Thank you. You know, this is wonderful. Once again, we started off really appreciating the park and the accessibility, and it is wonderful. And I had the opportunity to cry in my own room when Nancy handed the gift, and rightly, Kevin handed it, Pacific Land Design offered and volunteered his services, and he said, I'm just one within this, and he handed it back to her. This is a gift. We are all a gift, as Kevin is. We are here to serve. This is what good people do. We are made up of good people. Every one of us knows who we are. We need the place to be that. And I keep reminding us on Wednesday afternoon is Parks and Rec at 4:00 p.m. On the agenda is off-leash dogs and the rules governing it. We had a wonderful gentleman, Mr. Rosen, come on who loves to drive since 74, and these streets, and I agree with him. Separate, keep the cars separate, give them their place. They, they carry us. And I, my vision for the general plan advisory and the land use and the way we get around is, this is how we, how, listen to our ancestors and how we, science is behind the times. As much as Beacon, I stand by.
Thank you, Mr. Gottman.
Your work.
Thank you.
Okay, our final speaker is Patty Overly.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but after hearing Councilman Johnson's horrific experience watching a man die on the side of the road, I was reminded of a situation, or multiple situations here on Ocean Avenue in Midtown. Fortunately, nobody has died yet. We in the Midtown area have raised the concern of about a three-block area right adjacent to a grammar school where the speeds are horrendous. I watch out my window where I work from home, and I see parents crossing with strollers and small children going to the grammar school. In one year during COVID, we had three major accidents. A wall was damaged completely, had to be rebuilt, a homeowner's wall. Two cars were taken out, and a woman went head-on into a tree. Again, this is a three-block radius between Howard and Borchardt on Ocean. I spoke at length last fall with Jeff Perford. He told me a digital sign was going to be put up, 25-hour, 25-mile speed zone was going to be painted in the road, a traffic study, none of it happened. We raised this concern during the Haley Point Appeal and Planning Commission meeting, nothing has happened. Could somebody please look at this street? Children are in danger. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Overly.
And that concludes our public comment.
Thank you. And now I will ask our city manager if he has any comments or follow-ups.
Certainly, just a couple of comments if I can. We are early on with the SEIU negotiations, and so I'm somewhat surprised to see the membership showing up, but we will certainly hear, hear their concerns. As I mentioned, the tenant protection, this item is coming back, we're scheduling it the week of May 23rd, and we just haven't found the exact date yet. To Matt Bello's question about being able to visit the site, we are still working with the owner on that to figure out if and when we can do so. We just don't have an announcement to make at this point yet. Other than that, I'm going to let the rest of the comments lay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment to Mr. Rosen. I did get an email from him, actually a couple. I returned the email, letting him know that I forwarded off his request to the staff. I spoke with, got emails back from, from Phil and Cody Stoltz. They're putting together the information. I indicated that it would be coming out shortly. I offered him my personal cell phone and asked him if he would like to call me personally. I did not hear back either via email or a phone call, so I'm seeing Mr. Rosen for the first time this evening, which is fine, but I, he could have called me and I probably could have saved him the trip. So just wanted to make that comment, since the effort was put out to, to reach him and communicate with him. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Friedman. And so that concludes our public communications, and we will continue with our agenda. We have our consent items. We have five consent items on the agenda. And if any council members would like to ask questions or wish to pull an agenda item? Deputy Mayor Schrader?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I need to not be here because of a conflict on item 9D.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or need to pull an item? All right, so we will go ahead and take that item separately. So we will go ahead and vote on all of the rest of the agenda items. Well, actually, we will take public comment if we have public communications for any of our agenda items in the consent agenda.
There are no public communications.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Friedman?
I would move approval of all consent items with the exception of 9D.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. City Clerk, please proceed with the vote.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, members of the council, we will be using the voting cresteron, so go ahead and pull that up right now.
Okay, and we have seven yeses, and the motion carries.
Thank you. And we will now look at item 9D. We will go ahead and take a vote on item 9D.
I don't think a motion was made yet.
I'll move that we approved, item 90.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. And now we will take the vote.
Okay, it looks like because we have one council member absent that it will not complete the vote on the cresteron. My apologies.
We will abstain?
Thank you. Okay, and we have six ayes with one abstention, and the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so our next item, item 12, our public hearing item. We have 12A, conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 master fee schedule. And I would just like to remind my colleagues that as adopted in our council protocols, we each have a limit of five minutes for the first round of questions. This provides the other council members the opportunity to ask questions. And we will also ask Mr. City Clerk to display the timer as we are going through our questions. All right, so we have our Finance and Technology Director, Mr. Michael Kuhn.
Yes, good evening. As was mentioned, we're presenting the user regulatory fee update tonight. Given the presentation, will be our consultant, Terry Madsen from Clear Source Consulting. Then you, then you are familiar with him, and I'll be turning the time over to him. He'll be joining us virtually for the presentation, and then staff and he will be here to answer questions afterwards.
All right, and just before we begin, I would like to ask our city clerk if all of the noticing requirements have been met.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the notice was published twice.
All right, thank you. So now we open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Is everyone able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good. So this evening's topic is a user and regulatory fee update. I'm happy to share my screen if that works well for you for the presentation, or I can direct the clerk or the finance director to next slide.
So we have the presentation up, so we will go ahead and advance the slides here when you let us know.
Perfect. Well, again, my name is Terry Madsen. I'm here from Clear Source, and our firm helps communities throughout the state identify and recover the cost of providing fee-related services. The city has recently completed a user and regulatory fee study. Your city proactively reviews user regulatory fees as part of your normal operating procedures on an annual basis. And just as a reminder to the council, what we're dealing with are commonly referred to as user regulatory fees. They are amounts collected by cities throughout the state and local governments throughout the state when there is a service being provided to a direct beneficiary. So if we can identify like a direct receiver of service, we frequently use user and regulatory fees to offset that cost. Generally, we can think of communities as using tax revenues to fund those services that provide that broad community-wide benefit, and using something like user regulatory fees to offset the costs of providing specific services, things like construction inspection, development plan review versus tax revenues funding things like public safety, public works, and park maintenance services. Next slide, please. Examples of fees that we, that we examine would be permit fees for development, entitlement review, zoning compliance review, improvement plan review, encroachment review for, for people wishing to encroach in the city's right-of-way. We also look at cost recovery for parks and recreation and non-development-related items like impounding or certain types of specific licensing. Next slide, please. Importantly, this topic is limited to service-based user and regulatory fees. We are not examining as part of this update, and the council is not considering any changes as part of this update to taxes, or assessments, or utility rates, or even development, development impact fees offsetting the costs of infrastructure related to development. So none of those items are considered as part of this update. We're limiting our review to service-based fees. Next slide, please. Why do communities update fees? We update them to ensure that the receivers of direct services are offsetting those costs. This helps free that general fund that has really a lot of competing priorities and sort of finite resource, right? So we have a finite resource, we're trying to use as much as possible of it to provide that broad community-wide benefit. So we update fees when we see a direct receiver of service. As change, as costs change, we want to dynamically manage that process so that we avoid long periods of stagnation. It also helps with generational equity. If I need service today, and I pay significantly less than what it costs to receive the service, and tomorrow, somebody pays for the same service, but because fees haven't been updated for a decade or so, something like that, there's some generational inequity. So the city of Ventura works really hard to dynamically update these each year. They're examined, and each year, they're refined and adjusted. Additionally, that idea of service level expectation, we want to, to help continue to provide the services that the community is looking for. Offsetting the cost of providing those services helps us continue to provide those services. Next slide, please. Because these are fees and not taxes, we, we do follow legal guidelines that are outlined in the California Constitution and the California Government Code, and specifically, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're not using these as a new revenue generator. We are only using these to offset costs of service, so we're not in the profit-making business here. What we're trying to do is figure out what does it cost us to provide these services, and then a fee can be set up to that level, but we don't want to, to charge more than that. As a matter of policy, the City Council has historically directed that fees for these types of services typically be set to full cost recovery with, with some specific exceptions. Most of those exceptions result, we live in that recreation world. So parks and recreation fees. So parks and recreation fees for community programming. Next slide, please. Just fundamentally, we mention these topics of cost of service and cost recovery throughout our presentation and throughout our fee study report and the agenda, the supporting documents to the agenda. Cost of service, what we're thinking of here is because these are service-based fees, there really are two drivers of what is our cost of providing service. One is that underlying hourly rate of either in-house labor that's performing the service or contract service personnel that is supporting the city. But it's really fully burdened rates, so it's inclusive of salaries, benefits, uniforms, vehicles we're driving, fuel we're consuming, technology we're using, that fully loaded cost. And then the second component would be time. Because these are service-based fees, time matters. So if a particular activity takes us one hour of time and another activity takes us two hours of time, the cost of that second service that takes two hours of time is really a higher cost than the easier activity. So cost and fee are two different things. The first thing we're trying to do is identify what is our cost of service? And then we can use that to provide information to the council as it looks to set fees. Next slide. So we talked about cost of service from a cost, and the other phrase we use a lot is cost recovery. So once we identify our cost of service, that represents our ceiling. We can charge up to the cost of service, but we don't want to exceed it. But if for some reason we choose to collect less than our cost of service, so let's say our cost of service is $300, but we decide to establish a fee of $150, we would say we recovered a portion of our cost of service. So we recovered $150 of our cost from the applicant or receiver of service, but the other $150 had to be covered from some other city revenue source. And that is primarily the city's general fund. Your general fund tax resources are the main offsetter of any under-recovery. So that's a key, key item to note is that when we know something costs $300, but we decide to recover less than that, it is still costing the city $300 to provide that service. It's just a matter of whether that cost is being offset by the receiver of service or by some other city revenue source. Next slide, please. We mentioned that this is part of your ongoing annual review and operations. So staff typically updates fees via full cost of service study every two years. And then in that interim year, the in-between year, a CPI adjustment is performed just to account for general inflationary pressures. So last year was a CPI adjustment year. This year, there was a full cost of service study performed. And the results of this analysis and the recommendations before you this evening are based on that full cost of service study. So as an overview to the council, we'll move to the next slide. What you find is is common amongst California municipalities. You have almost 500 fees. And the idea here is that in any given day and in any given year, there are numerous types of requests for service you'll receive. So different types of permits that are being requested, different types of reviews that are needed, different types of licenses that are issued. And so we establish what we want as a comprehensive fee schedule to be able to accommodate the various scenarios that might walk through your door. So there's a lot of, lot of fees that are on the schedule, but some of them are maybe low-volume items that you might not even see in a given year, where others are high-volume items. But what we see in Ventura is that for this update that's before the council this evening, the very vast majority of your fees, about 82% of your fees, are proposed for only minor adjustment, if any adjustment at all. And so you can see that over 400 fees are proposed to either remain unchanged or have slight decrease or just a slight increase of maybe up to 5% or $10, that kind of threshold. And what we want to note to the council is that there are some fees that are proposed by, to increase by more than 5%. We use that as a threshold for the council just from an ongoing basis from year to year as you think about fee changes. We do want to mention that the most recent CPI information available for your region says that regional cost inflation is increasing at a rate of 8.5% annually right now. So you know, of those 58 fees, more than a third of them are proposed to increase by less than just the most recent change in annual CPI. There's several that are proposed to increase by 6%, that kind of thing, maybe 7%. But we just want to identify that threshold. But the bottom line is, for the most part, there are very minor adjustments proposed. There are 11 new fees proposed. And because this is a true cost of service study year, we reach out to the departments to ask if they would like to do any sort of fee restructuring or modification to refine the fee schedule and enhance that connection between service provided and fee collected. And we did receive some feedback this year from staff that there are 21 fees where we think, hey, if we reorganize these fees and restructure them, there's a way we can communicate better to our public about what service is being received and why we're collecting a fee for that service. So there are some fee structures modifications proposed. Next slide, please. The next few slides deal with those, what we would call sort of material changes, either new fees the city council is being asked to consider or fees that are proposed to increase by more than 5% or those fee schedule modifications that are there being considered. For the new fees being proposed, those are outlined in attachment to your agenda report, but they can be summarized below. Your municipal code allows for your planning director to refer certain reviews to a different review authority. So design review committee, housing preservation committee, or historic preservation committee, planning commission, city council, so forth. We'd like to establish, there is a sort of an identifier in the municipal code that allows for it, but there is no offsetting fee for when that referral is required. So we would propose establishing a fee for those various referrals. If there is work commenced without a permit, we'd like to establish a fee for that that's consistent with other municipalities. And then if, if there's new development that comes online, we want to model and track that infrastructure that's put into the city. And so providing for a GIS atlas mapping fee that allows our technical staff to draw that infrastructure and make it available for, for those that are interested in future modifications to infrastructure. Also, if there is a request for expedited plan review and the city is able to accommodate it, we want to have a fee in place for that. Occasionally, staff will receive requests for review to use materials that are, they're not readily identified, maybe in the building code. And so we want to review those requests, but have an offsetting fee for that review. And then if a permit expires and somebody wishes to reinstate it, there is an administrative process associated with that with no current fee in place. And so we'd just like to establish a fee for that. The next slide, please. The Ventura Water Department has, or is transitioning, or maybe has already completed that transition to automated metering, infrastructure, meter reader, meter reading infrastructure. And so I think for most of our residential meters and most of our meters in the city, they can be read through technology now instead of having a field worker come out and, and review that actual meter on a case-by-case basis. If anyone wishes to opt out of that service, there is a cost of sending the field worker out. So there is a proposed fee, but the fee targets less than full cost recovery and is in line with what has been sort of approved by the Public Utilities Commission in the past. Also, the Finance Department, for the most part, they, they provide just general services, but they do have a few fee-related services because they really are functioning as a financial institution in certain scenarios. And so it's common amongst different financial institutions to have a fee in place when there is a request for outgoing wire transfers. There's additional review of outgoing wire transfers. And so there is a fee proposed to be set in place and the fee aligns to what you would see commonly at any other financial institution. For the fees, next slide, please. For the fees that are proposed to increase by more than 5%, we mentioned that many of these are just slightly above 5%. In the examples of this, in the fire prevention world, you have an entire fee schedule that is just generally proposed to increase by about 6% to align to recent changes in, in cost of service. And so it's less than the most recent change in regional CPI, but it's more than 5%. So we just wanted to, to identify it. But it is consistent with our, the historical pattern we're seeing. There are other changes in costs that are driven by recent increases in the cost of materials. We're hearing about this from all of the, the agencies we serve. Most of your fees are really what we would call the service-based fees, and they are really almost exclusively labor. But occasionally in the utility side, there's actual hard materials that are being provided to, like the cost of a meter. And those costs have increased very significantly over the last couple of years. So some of your fee increases are being driven by just those costs of materials. You also have adjustments to service time as staff reviews those and thinks about current procedures as opposed to historical procedures or just the way we're thinking about things today with our, our staff in place today. You just also are really facing inflationary pressures that other communities are facing and your residents are facing. There's just, there's a pressure on fuel prices, utility costs, you name it. Next slide, please. We mentioned that there are some fees that are what we would call proposed for modification. So depending on the scenario that's being reviewed, you may actually experience a fee decrease or a fee increase, or your fee may be unchanged, but it's, it's, it's difficult to call it one or the other. So instead, we have to call it a fee modification. And the idea here, as we mentioned, is to really enhance the correlation between the service we're providing and the fee being collected from the applicant. We mentioned two examples here, but these are outlined in your agenda report. An example would be if there's a final map review required for a subdivision. Today, we have one fee in place for final map review, but staff has thought through sort of the recent scenarios that are coming across the desk and said that it makes the most sense to have two subcategories for final map review. So a final map review for parcel maps would be like four lots or less versus tracked maps, which would be five lots or more. And so those are two distinct efforts. And so one is more intensive than the other and would have a higher fee instead of just one uniform fee across the board. Another example is planning staff noticed that on the design review process, our permit application process, there is different thresholds. So you may have a review for small project, a review for medium-sized project, and a review for larger projects. But the current scaling says review of sort of 16 units or more. But as staff has thought through what's coming in the door over the last several years, they identified that there really is a difference between 16 units and 30 units and 60 units. And so we felt like it's more appropriate to add some scaling to make it so that it's not one uniform fee for anything above 16 units, but to really capture that change as the units scale up. I know you have a full agenda. I wanted to avoid being long-winded. Next slide, please. The action before the, the council is, or the request before the council is just to conduct the public hearing and then to determine whether to adopt the resolution establishing fees for use in fiscal year 2223. Because we're complying with government code and these, some of these are development-related fees, if the council adopts the updated fees, the fees are proposed to be effective July 8, 2022. And this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions or feedback, I'm available to receive them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen, for the presentation. And we do have some questions from council members. We have councilmember Friedman, followed by councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Michael, I know you're going to use the timer and you know, though, that when the speaker is, the, the answer, we're not being charged. Okay, great. I want all that time back, by the way. Thank you. Earlier today, I had given a call to Michael Kuhn because I, I've been through this a few times as a council member. Most recently, what was it, two years ago? And what I usually looked for in the fees is where you see a large differential from one year to the other. And for the most part, as you indicated, 82% are within that 5% or $10, and that's fine. But what I did see, and I guess I just wanted to try to get some clarification, and I believe Peter Gilli is going to be the best one to answer the questions. If, on page 155 of the staff report, that's where I saw what I believe to be the biggest differentials. A good example, let's say, under number three, new construction, single-family residential, it's having an increase of 134%. Two to four units, an increase of 195%. Of five-plus units, 186%. That's a heck of a lot more than the 5% or the 12% that were mentioned previously. So Peter, and I, so Peter, I guess I'm looking to find out why such a big difference? And how come this wasn't caught two years ago? Because the same consultants did this for us to be sure we were in line. And I'm not sure I really understand what recalibrating cost of services are. So those are my questions, Peter. I hope you can enlighten us a bit.
So on the question of the recalibration, I'll leave that to Mr. Madsen. But on, on why some of the planning fees in particular changed a lot, the primary reason is we have more information now that we can look at how many hours of work is actually spent on these type of applications. And now that we are better coordinated and the communication between the departments are there, there, there are additional attachments or parts of the attachment that show the hours for each of these fees. And so when we internally looked at what each department did and also starting to include certain departments that weren't included in the past, like if a project is going to need to have input from the city attorney's office, have some hours in there, if it's going to have each department have that, have that in there. So that is the main reason why certain fees have gone up a lot. Most of them are tied to, I think, the, the housing projects. And as you scale up and they get larger, they certainly do get, they do get higher as well. And there's also a difference now between the design review fees. Most of those actually dropped a little bit, whereas the permit fee increased. And that, that's partly because in the past, for some reason, all of the other departments' hours were put into the design review application, when admittedly, that's not the permit that the other departments are actually looking at the most. So that, I think that's what Mr. Madsen would, would call a recalibration. It's looking at the fee, what's actually being, being, the time actually spent. And just in past years, or in current years, I should say, those costs are just coming out of the general fund. And so we want to propose having that actually paid for by the applicant.
So I, I guess we could just say that our fee structure continues to be a work in process, a work in progress. Just because it wasn't picked up two years ago doesn't mean we're not picking it up now, which we obviously are. And you're drilling down more to determine capturing hours that we weren't really charging. And our, our goal And our goal is 100% cost recovery for things like this. So we really need to be capturing those to actually pay for the cost.
Yeah. And the goal also is as the city continues to get more efficient in future years, we may be able to say some of these applications take actually fewer hours. But at this point, these are the hours that are being spent on these, on these type of projects.
Okay. Mr. Mattson, did you have anything to add with regard to the recalibration question?
I do. Thank you, council member. I just have one comment in case it helps the council as it reviews that. I think you make a great point, which is if you're looking at the agenda report, there may be some items that catch your attention as, hey, this looks like a doubling of cost or something like that. And what I want to remind the city council is that one of the challenges we face is that as we ask staff, hey, can you, can you review these service times? And they refine service times. If they refine a service time from an hour to two hours, or half an hour to an hour, in the grand scheme of things, it is a one-hour change, but it may result in a doubling of a fee. And so I think that's what you're, you're seeing there is that there are some changes that feel minor in scope. It's moving review of a new single-family residential, building plan check from an hour, from an hour to two hours, but it has a, it looks like a significant shift in percentage. So in some cases, that's what's driving it.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. And I remember, Peter, a couple of years ago, I had, it wasn't an issue, I just brought it up. There was some major increases percentage-wise in, there were water hookups. And as it turned out, it was the actual cost of the, either the equipment or the materials themselves. But when I looked at this, this is clearly strictly a service item. There's no materials involved. So I was trying to get down to why there was such a big differential from the other fees. And I appreciate, I'm glad I gave you the heads up on it so I didn't catch you off-guard. And I appreciate that you were able to answer the question. Thank you both. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Friedman. And now we have Councilmember Brown, followed by Councilmember Halter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one question. It looks like that, and I would not like the timer on, please, I can manage my own time.
Councilmember Brown, we will keep the timer for all council members.
No, that was not a part of the agreement when we voted on the policy. The agreement was each council member can choose whether or not they want the time displayed or not, and I choose not to have the time displayed. Thank you.
Let's check with our city attorney or city manager. Was that part of our protocols?
Madam Mayor, I just need to check the protocols really quickly.
Okay. How about we just keep the timer on until he double checks? And then if that's not part of it, we'll take it off.
Nope. We can leave it off. And then if it is part of it, you can put it on the next time. Only have one question, which is the planning fees on number one?
Let, how about we take a five-minute recess just so that we can check the protocols? Let's go ahead and do that. All right, we are back. And we will have our city attorney give us more information about our protocols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The protocols provide for five minutes for the first round of questions. And it is the, as a courtesy, the mayor will signal by hand to a council member who's been speaking for over five minutes to let the council member know that they have been speaking for that amount of time. And they should be wrapping up their comments to allow other council members to ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So I have a question for, I guess for anybody. If we do run the timer, but Councilmember Brown, you don't want it to be shown on the screen or on your screen or anywhere?
I'm not understanding where it's being displayed. When I speak, I see my face in front of me and I see my face up there. So I'm saying I don't need the timer. That's all. I mean, I can see both screens, so I'm not sure if this screen is private or if that, you know, I don't know.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I recall when we were having this discussion that one of the things we wanted to try to avoid is for you to be timing, because you are to be not only listening to what's going on, but also running the meeting. So you already have two tasks, and the third task of timing was no longer going to be your responsibility. It was going to be that of the city clerk to keep the timing, you know, keep the time. So again, if you want to use your iPhone and time, I don't know how you will be otherwise notified that five minutes is up if you have no other form of timing. Mr. McDonald, do you have a suggestion?
Sure. I'm going to test something right now and let me know if you can see it on your screens. It will not be displayed here. It will not be displayed in the broadcast or outside anywhere. And let me know if you can see a timer right now on your screen.
Yeah.
Can you? So we can use that function, and it is not being displayed in the broadcast. It's not being displayed on the screen or outside of council chambers. Only broadcast on the computer screens at the dais.
I can appreciate that. However, I just want to know what the actual voted-on policy stated as far as a display of the time. That's all I was really, I was not disagreeing that I need to stay within the five minutes according to what we agreed on. I'm fine with that. And the whole protocols of asking questions first and making comments later, although my colleague did not adhere to that earlier, I didn't say anything about it. What I'm trying to establish here is, you know, not for the, not to take the intent of the policy outside and make it a broader scope than what it wasn't originally intended to be. That's all. And so I only had one question, which would have been less than five minutes. So now we're going into a discussion that is not agendized, but I just, I'm not sure from what I heard, the timer is not what's necessary. It's just to stay under the time that's necessary. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Brown, that's correct. There's, there's no, nothing in the protocols that requires a timer to be displayed. And this is an appropriate discussion, just to answer your question, because this is part of our, part of the procedure for this, for this item.
So what are you suggesting? That, are you saying the policy requires that it be displayed? Or that, just that it needs to be adhered to?
The protocols does provide for a five-minute first-round question. It does not require that it be displayed. The mayor is, according to the protocols, is to give a courtesy hand wave to let the speaker, the question, council member know that they reached about five minutes in questioning.
And that's what I recall, and that's all I was saying. So I just wanted to make sure that was clarified, so it doesn't appear as if I'm being, that I'm suggesting something outside of what we had originally discussed and voted on. So.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
If you don't have any timer, how will you know when to give a courtesy hand wave?
I will use my phone to time the questions. So that's why I was hoping that we could just have the timer on and our city clerk could start and stop the timer, but it won't be displayed on the broadcast. Would that be okay with you, Councilmember Brown? Just to display it on our own screens?
Let's say for today, just to let it lie, we can discuss it after the meeting and then we'll go from there. Because my understanding was something different and I.
Is that a yes or a no? You do not want the timer? Okay. So I'll just go ahead and time it with my phone and we can continue that way. All right. So Councilmember Brown?
I just had a question about the planning fees and the reason, if we have the planning fees, the DRC, HBC, PC, and CC referral fees. Explain to me the definition of a director's referral? And if these fees proposed are the standard fee according to the other cities within the CPI? And why we, why you feel the city of internal needs those particular fees? And would it be prohibitive of, say, development or some sort of project going through? Those are my questions.
I think the part about the CPI, well, I believe you had a part that was about CPI I will ask Mr. Mattson to try to address. The purpose of the fee is that in the streamlining ordinance, there is the authority given for items at a lower level to be referred up to more hearings. And that is always going to have more cost. And if we don't put that fee in, then that cost is simply coming out of the general fund. And, and so that is why it's proposed. So imagine a permit that normally could simply go to a staff So imagine a permit that normally could simply go to a staff level hearing. But because of either the applicant not wanting to go to the staff, to the staff level hearing, the applicant proposing something that, that the director considers is so significant that it shouldn't be at a staff hearing? Or that in some cases, an applicant isn't willing to work with staff on the issues? And it's, it's, it's a judgment call that it should go then to possibly HBC or DRC, even though maybe the ordinance doesn't say it has to. It's kind of a, it's a special check and balance for when those might occur. I anticipate there might be three to five of those a calendar year, so I don't see that happening a lot. But if we don't have a fee for it, then again, it comes out of the general fund, even though there's a lot more staff time being spent on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And now we have Councilmember Halter, followed by Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to start first and just say that I appreciate the answers to, I had submitted over four pages of questions to staff over the weekend. And this is an area that really concerns and interests me, so I really appreciate all the answers. So thank goodness I did that because you're not going to have to hear them all. But I do have a couple of follow-up questions to a few of these. I come to realize though that my questions about the fees aren't so much about the fee itself, and so I'll save those comments for later. It's really more about the services, what's interesting is the services that we deem necessary in order to charge a fee and why we deem those necessary. That's the interesting part to me. And how a fee for a class in Parks and Recs is equivalent to providing the service or a fee for getting a permit for a hot water heater. Because one's obviously an, an option. The other one in this day and age is not an option. It's just something we have to do, right? And I think there's a real question there. It's just kind of a rhetorical question. When it comes to variances, I only have like three or four of these, so it's not too bad. When it comes to variances, is there any consideration in our city since we have such irregular, irregularity in our lot sizes and amenities? Where we have some wiggle room there to, when a, when a lot is not your standard hundred foot by seventy foot lot? That you actually give a little bit more discretion as opposed to charging a thirty-one hundred dollar fee for a variance? Because some of these lots are just, because of the age of our city, we have some very unique lots. So I'm just wondering if we've given that any consideration so they don't have to pay a thirty-one hundred dollar fee in the older parts of our city where the lots are irregular?
So, so the, our ordinances and processes do, do remain fairly dated. And a lot of our ordinance requirements and setbacks and such, some go back to nineteen seventy-one. Thus, there are a lot of things that are applied for that seem very reasonable now that sometimes triggers a variance here or in the form-based codes even, which is more from the two thousand and five era, some type of warrant or exception. I do believe we need to go through all of our regulations and make sure they do align with, with what we're looking for. I do hope that after the general plan is adopted that we are able to go into our zoning ordinance and comprehensively look at all of the regulations and make sure they still apply. And I think that's the appro, that's the method of making it so that if, if there's certain type of variances that we as a city always approve and those do exist. Why don't we just change the rule to make it so that you don't need the variance? And, and so we, we, we believe that should happen and it's just a matter of, of when that actual work on that ordinance occurs.
Okay, great. That's the answer I wanted to hear. Thank you. You may want to stay there because I'm going to bounce back and forth a little bit. Is on the Mills Act, is Fee Twenty D, it's, is that an automatically generated bill? It's a two hundred dollar fee for people who have the Mills Act, which of course protects the historic nature of a property. Is that automatically generated or only after an owner of the property submits a proper report?
I, we, we haven't looked into that in detail. Our expectation is that we would want to have that fee paid when they submit their annual report. Because everyone who has a Mills Act contract is supposed to provide the city with a report noting how they are meeting what they have in their contract. And two hundred dollars is about one hour of work. And so I think the expectation is we'll have a program that whether it starts out in, in kind of an online form or whether it has to start out as being, being mailed in, don't know at this point. But the process would be that when you give your report, you also have that fee paid.
And how would, how would one person know if they bought a property that has the Mills Act that there is a process as you just described in force? Is that described usually in escrow?
It, it is, but we will probably need to periodically send, send letters to all the properties that have it because there's a lot of things that are, are disclosed in escrow and a lot of things we sign and.
Right.
Want to make sure people are up to it. Also, if someone does not provide an update for that year, we can reach out to them and, and, and remind them.
It's a great, it's a great program that protects our historic resources.
Yes.
So I don't want to see somebody losing that opportunity. Another thing is twenty-one C annual compliance for inclusionary housing. That's a fee, I guess per unit probably, like when there's inclusionary housing or affordable housing. Each year, a certain fee is applied to that property owner for whatever affordable housing units they have to ensure that the affordable housing rules are being applied and that the people who truly deserve to live there are living there, correct?
Yes, yes, although I think it's going to be per project. So if there's one project that happens to have a half dozen or more, again, it's just having somebody being able to receive the report and, and examine it. And so it, I don't expect it to be per unit.
Right. I'll need a couple more here and that's defensible space program. This one is a very controversial one, although a very small fee. Is the fees listed as twenty-one dollars. The actual fee mailed out is thirty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. What's been added on to that is sixteen dollars and fifty cents from a third-party billing company and seven percent for technology fee, which I think a lot of the fees have that seven percent. But is there other fees that have the sixteen dollars and fifty cents added because another third party is, is collecting that fee?
So we do have some fees that are collected by third parties, very few. When that is the case, we do have that administrative fee. But typically, staff collects most fees and that time is included into the fee. So for example, with the inspection program, there's no staff time included to collect the fee because it's being charged out to the third party because it was determined that they could do it more economically.
Right. And so that is a fee that's going to be billed automatically to the six thousand households that reside in the high fire zone. So imagine that bill's going to be mailed out to them. Is that how that's going to happen?
Yes, um.
It's a new fee, so just trying to verify that.
I believe the fire marshal is present with us tonight. He'd be best to answer exactly the logistics of the billing.
Only because it's a new fee. It's a small fee, but it's a new fee and some people have had liens put on their property for a smaller fee than that.
And thank you for the question. Yes, so every inspection that is, every defensible space inspection that is performed, there will be an inspection notice sent out with a bill for the twenty-one dollars. That will be administered by the third-party billing company that will also include that sixteen dollar and fifty cent fee. So for every inspection, that will incur that fee.
Okay. And there is, since this is such a new process and fee, there's other issues behind that. Such as is, by May eighteenth, everybody has to be in compliance. And the back of the form that was sent out was pretty clear, I thought, on what was needed. The concern is that there are standards that have been applied to the new homes returning after the fire versus the existing homes in the hillside high fire zones. So people have, I've received dozens and dozens of calls from people wanting to know if they're going to get fined if they don't cut down that pine tree that is thirty feet away from the property.
No, we, on the guidelines, on the back of the form that we sent out, there's no requirements for cutting down trees.
Okay.
Okay, so no, nobody will be fined if they don't cut a tree down. It's about maintaining.
Right.
What is currently there. And you're correct that yes, there are different requirements for new installations than there are for existing landscapes. So for the existing landscapes, we won't, I use that term fairly loosely. We shouldn't be requiring anybody to cut trees down. It's just going to be limbing up trees, reducing the amount of fuel that is currently there.
While we're, we're regulating what type of plant material people plant in their yards for the new houses returning, a lot of the existing homes have those plant materials. So the reality is what I'm telling people is that it's really about, what you just said, it's really about maintenance, making sure there's not huge, what do you call, lumps of, of bushes that can easily catch fire and keeping things from climbing the walls and hanging over the house in particular.
Exactly, okay. And creating separation, as you, as you referred to the big clumps. If we can separate out those, those clumps, make them into two separate, two separate clumps, if you will, and reduce the, the potential from fire spreading from one, one shrub to another.
And this has caused a certain amount of anxiety out in the community on what's really going to be enforced. So I hope we go with a little bit of a, a light hand in how we enforce this, but the intent's good.
And I understand and keep in mind that we have been performing these inspections for the past three years.
Yeah.
So, you know, those who have the anxiety can be relieved that we've already been doing this program.
Right.
Right? And if they haven't been hearing from us in the past three years, odds are that their, their property is in pretty good shape. And if things have grown and become an issue in the, in that time, it'll be very minimal. And, and the work that they need to do won't be very, very extensive.
That's reassuring. I hope a lot of our constituents are listening to this tonight. It's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Halter.
Am I out of time?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll save the rest for my next round.
All right, thank you. And now we have Deputy Mayor Schrader. Deputy Mayor Schrader, are you okay with the timer?
Yes, you can time me.
All right, thanks.
Michael, is there any indication that the fees, particularly the ones that Councilmember Freeman identified that were, had significant increases, you know, above the, I'll just say above ten percent? Do you compare those with that fee with other cities to make sure they're not out of whack?
So we do look at some of the fees, like I said, you know, our consultant, you know, obviously, you know, they do this across the state of California. And they, you know, typically chime in and can keep us aware of the fees in the area and throughout the state. And Terry may be able to provide a little bit more information on kind of the process that we use to compare fees with other jurisdictions.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember. So we mentioned there's four hundred and ninety-plus fees in your schedule, so comparing each individual fee is sort of an unrealistic expectation. We wouldn't be able to pull it off and it wouldn't be information that could be digested by the council, but we do several points of sort of inspection to, to test rationality. And the primary point that we review is, remember we said these are service-based fees? And so we're trying to identify what is the, like a reasonable cost for, for service time? And what we find is that the outcomes calculated for City of Ventura align well to the other agencies we serve. So when we think about planning fees, we, you know, planning is valued at a, at a different time than building or land development engineering even. And so we look for patterns to see if we're consistent with the other communities we serve. And we found that yes, in Ventura, we do see consistency. And then when we see fee changes, we really ask staff to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts. So in many cases, there is, in the fees that you're noticing changing, one of the drivers of change might be capturing review provided by multiple divisions in the city. So planning applications are intensive in nature. Many of them are very intensive and they require review by multiple city departments. And when a fee changes, we work with staff to make sure, hey, this departmental review time isn't already captured as part of a different department's review time. We confirm things like that to test for rationality. So, so we do a lot of different examinations and what we would say is the outcomes we see align to what we would expect with our, and what we've seen in our other work.
I guess when I'm asked, sure, there's fifty-eight. I, I would never ask you to take a look at all four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five fees and compare them to seventeen cities.
Yeah.
But those fees, I guess all I'm looking for is if you can go look at the fees that increased by twenty percent or more and look at, you pick three or four cities and come back and tell us if any of those fees that increased by twenty percent are ten percent above everybody else, or majority of our peers. That's all I would be looking for. And he may have said that in his answer, but I'm not sure he did. And I apologize if I didn't get it.
Well, I apologize if I caused confusion. So there are fifty-eight fees that are proposed to increase by more than five percent. I think, I believe that's the right number, let's say. Let me make sure that's right. Yeah, fifty-eight fees that are proposed to increase by more than five percent. So I think those are the ones you're curious about. We have gone and, and checked that, let's say, a third of those are fire prevention fees that are proposed to increase by six percent, but they do fall within that threshold. We look at the fire prevention fees to make sure they align to what we see in our other work and that they're consistent with fees charged by other fire departments that we've come across or, or within your region, that your underlying hourly rate makes sense because that is the driver of your fee, is this underlying hourly rate? And what we say is that yes, for the fees that are proposed to change, we did make those examinations and believe that the findings are sound.
Okay, so all fifty-eight of the charges of, of the fees that got increased by more than five, six, five percent are reasonable relative to time and, times and allocation and comparison to other cities.
Yeah, we, so you know, even another chunk, you know, twenty with the water fees, basically it's twenty, twenty to fifty of these are water fees and those are preliminary, the costs of equipment going up.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schrader. And now we have Councilmember Johnson. Are you okay with running the clock?
I, I trust that we will continue to use the clock on all items at all meetings from now on.
That's the intent.
We will, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, so I have a couple of questions.
So just, Councilmember Johnson, was that a yes on the clock?
Yes, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're actually being consistent with the application of the protocol.
Right, okay.
So following up, this is a question really from Mr. Haglund on a couple of things that my colleague, Councilmember Halter brought up. When he was talking about parks and water heaters, he said, one thing is an option, another is something we have to do. And then later he brought up the issue of the fire inspection fees. And I know you and I have had some discussions about this. Could you please explain the, the legal basis for, for what is a mandatory fee?
Sure, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Johnson. A fee that is part of a bona fide regulatory program that applies to, that applies and benefits the, where the fee payers receive the service, then it is, it is a fee that is allowed and allowed under the fee schedule without a Prop two twenty-six or Prop two eighteen analysis.
Thank you so much. I know we had a lot of concerns from, from people in the hillsides and I appreciate your explanation. I do have a question for Mr. Gilly. I do have a question for Mr. Gilli. Thank you, Mr. Gilli. And I don't mean to sandbag you on this. You mentioned our housing element in the determination letter. I wasn't able to pull it up. I know I looked at it briefly before. Has HCD given any feedback for our housing element that would suggest that we might need to look at something other than full cost recovery for some of our fees?
At this point, no, they have not. I do think that there are objectives that we put into the housing element for, for example, the expedited plan review, that we are committing that we are going to set up a waiver, so if you're a 100% affordable project, you won't have to pay that fee. So there's certain examples like that, but for the majority of projects and market rate type projects, they have not made that statement.
Okay. Thank you very much. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. All right. And I just have a question on Slide 12 of the PowerPoint. We were talking about Ventura water fees, the fee for opt-out of automated meter reading. Is that a request that has been made by residents? I'm just wondering if people don't want to do the automated meter reading, and they actually want someone to go out there?
Mayor Robocavolo, that is correct. We do have some citizens that have specific confidential reasons why they do not want an AMI meter. And so we have developed a fee to recover the cost for going out there and reading the meter every month.
Okay. Thank you. I was just wondering about that. Thanks. All right. Are there any additional questions from Councilmembers? No more questions? All right. Do we have public communications?
No public communications received.
All right. So we will turn the conversation back to Council for comments and deliberation. Councilmember Holter, are you okay with the clock?
Absolutely. Appreciate the help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Holter. If I could, just, if it's okay, just to remind the Council that the item on the agenda is for fees. Right. So we need to, in order to stay consistent with the Brown Act, we should try to keep it away from the policy associated, but more just related to the fees. That's what's on the agenda tonight. Just a general reminder. Sorry for the interruption. Very appropriate. Thank you. I wanted to share that what I look at with the fees that are being presented tonight is the fact that I always have to look at, as a policymaker, as a leader, as a businessperson, what we're encouraging and what we're discouraging from happening. And that's what I look at more than anything. And then I look at benefit versus cost. And those things are always important to me, as a leader and as a policymaker. Tonight, it's about fees. I get that. The real devil in the details is really what's behind that fee and what's required for the process that that fee is being charged for. That's the conversation for another day, and I get that. So with that, I would be supporting a motion to approve these fees tonight. But I do want to make sure that we reserve that opportunity sometime in the future to talk about the processes and the costs associated with what goes, why somebody would have to require the use of this service that we're describing. Okay? So, and the only other question along with that, one final thing, was the, just clarity, because some people don't know this, is that the 3% charge for using a credit card online, because so many of things are online, applies to credit cards, not to debit cards, correct? Yeah. Yeah. So it's just a clarity, because a lot of us love the fact we could pay things online, but the 3% is what the banks charge. That's why we have to charge it. I get that. But if you use a debit card, I think you could, there might be some security issues with that, but that's a way around the 3%. So with that, I will be supporting a motion when it's made. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Holter. Any additional comments? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff, and I'm sorry, I forgot the name of our consultant. You know, it's interesting how really forcing a city to examine its fees, what it charges, why, how much time everything puts. You know, I've watched this process over a number of years, and we're still figuring our way through it, I think is the safe way of putting it. But, you know, I think what was originally meant to be sort of a taxpayer, fee payer protection has really done the city a service in being able to track the amount of time that our staff is putting into certain things. And so with that, I would also be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Now we have Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did you close the public hearing?
We can go ahead and close the public hearing now.
If it's closed, then I'm going to make a motion, if I could. And that is that we, I move that we adopt a proposed user fee resolution and schedule to be effective July 8th, 2022.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Friedman. Deputy Mayor Schrader?
Second.
All right. And a second by Deputy Mayor Schrader. Any discussion? All right. If there is no discussion, then we will go ahead and take a vote.
And we have seven I votes, and the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Before we take our next item, let's just take a couple of minutes, a little break, and we'll be back. All right. So we will come back. We will now look at our next item, which is Item 13A, the 2022 to 2023 City Council Goals Progress Update. And for that, we have our City Manager, Mr. Alex McIntyre, and our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Akbar Ali Khan.
Madam Mayor, members of the Council, thank you very much. We're going to provide you a very quick summary of where we are really for the first quarter of the council goals, and I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager Akbar Ali Khan to make that presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll make this very brief. Tonight is the first quarterly report of the council's adopted goals from its February 7th City Council meeting. While we have several goals that span multiple years, we typically look at our goal-setting process on an 18-month running cycle. So in this case, that cycle started in January of 2022 and runs through June of 2023. This quarterly report covers the first three months of that cycle from January of '22 to March of '22. We look at this really at three major events. The first is adoption, which is, as I said a minute ago, happened on February 7th. The second is the budgeting for those goals, to make them executable. That'll happen next month as part of the council's budget adoption process. And then lastly, the actual execution of those very goals at the end of the 18-month cycle, notwithstanding some of the multi-year goals that I'll show on the next slides. Council may have seen this graphic before. These are the new goals that were adopted at the February 7th meeting. And then in addition to these, there were also a direction to retain focus on multi-year projects, such as the ERP system and the fire strategic plan, and a variety of other long-term initiatives. Each table in the staff report, I'm going to turn your attention there for just a moment, is verbatim from the February 7th meeting. I just want to point your attention to the final two rows. That's the one exception. That's the only difference from what you saw just a few months ago. The final row in each table shows the progress that was made from January to March of 2022, hence the first quarter. And then right below that, you'll see a row that says July 2022 milestone, and that's just to indicate where staff anticipates to be near the end of this fiscal year. So as I said, I was going to keep it very brief, and now I wanted to just provide an opportunity for City Council to ask any questions of staff at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ali Khan. And now we will take questions from Councilmembers. All right. We have Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Schrader?
Yeah. One question on the economic development strategy. So if I've got it right, it says the scope is limited to improving permitting process management, gives me monument signs, and revitalizing the Johnson corridor. We're not just limiting ourselves to those three things, correct?
That is correct, Deputy Mayor Schrader. This list here, I wouldn't call it an exhaustive list. I think what's mentioned here is meant to be kind of examples of the kinds of things we would be undertaking. So that scope, actually, will go back in front of the Economic Development Subcommittee, probably in the month of July, to take a look before we put that on the street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schrader. And now we have Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm starting my time right now on my phone. I just wanted to know, as it relates to the broadband, the broadband accessibility and the fact that we've been in conversation with SOFI, and that we have planned a meeting to learn more about answering some of their questions, can we also have a meeting that is inclusive of the larger, broader picture of internet accessibility, what Wi-Fi options exist in the city already, and to get some of those questions answered that SOFI could not answer?
Councilmember Brown, if I understood the request correctly, it was to have a broader conversation around internet access beyond just what we're seeking to accomplish with sci-fi. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Because when I went on the conference, I found that there was a lot of information that we were not even, didn't even have the opportunity to discuss.
Okay. If and when the item comes back, perhaps what might be helpful for staff to better prepare for that conversation is maybe a list of questions that you feel would be helpful to share with the listening audience, so we can have either Mr. Cameron or Mr. Nelson prepare that in advance of that council-end item.
Thank you. And I'll just go ahead and make a, at the end, when we make our comment, I'll make a brief summary of some of the things that I heard at the conference, so that you guys will have an idea of what to prepare for. And I can also put it in an email. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Any additional questions? Any additional questions? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. This may be a question for Mr. Nelson or Mr. Cameron as well. I'm sorry, gentlemen. Oh, no, I meant Mr. Gilli. When we come back and do talk about streetlights, will we also be talking about the opportunity that provides for broadband when it comes to 5G radios and fixed wireless broadband?
It only is that if we were to acquire the streetlights, it does present an opportunity, perhaps for the city to use those streetlights for other things. But really, the focus of the item when we bring it back will be to discuss the different options that council would have for bringing solvency to the streetlight district.
Thank you. Could that staff report include what some of the benefits might be when it comes to placing radios on streetlights?
Currently, it does have just a very general reference to that without any great detail, but we could look into that more certainly.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. All right, do we have any public communications?
Madam Mayor, we do have one public communication, and that is Trevor Gottsman. And my apologies, we did just receive a second one. Trevor will be followed by Patty Overly.
Good evening again, everybody. Oh, good, a clock is coming up. I am glad I have an opportunity because budgeting is, it includes everything on the car, you know, it's in preparation for everything and where we are and the status. And, you know, it relates back to what we were just talking about, the new fees. And it's really good, the more community development in this, you know, the community development and the coastal access, the resiliency program that we're talking about. These are our most important, the smallest and least of us are, everything is filtered and swirls around and creates the momentum that we need. And so we need to really think in those terms and incorporate more of the community. And I agree, the dark fiber, we can lay the dark fiber, but until we give the place for the community to access and light it up, that's, so we can use these incentives to incorporate the community and find who can do what within it. I keep saying, so bring these volunteer corps in. We've got the bike path, the bike trails more and more. Try and use these resources that we've got now to implement it. Like, I'm referring back to the Mills Act and those type of things, the historical preservation. You've got the, I don't know if I'm off topic here, but it's on the budgeting aspect of things, how we keep things in balance. Let's acknowledge and keep healthy. Look at things, as I said before, look between the cracks. But we, these are little mines, little reserves, as the water pure is. These, let us help you with those things. Let us use our, you know, what we're stewarding to help the city steward. And it really comes down to the city needs to just let the community be involved so that we all know why and how these things work and we can offer our services. And it takes all of us, every one of us is responsible. And allow us this opportunity to be, to show us where you can use us. And it takes courage to ask, I know, and I'm the biggest chicken of us all. So I'll keep cooing about our sotling eggs and we can eat together. But I'll sweep the sidewalks, use the gentle approach, use, go back to this, as I said, the small approach. And then the big stuff, the city, we do it all together. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody. Much appreciated. And just, yeah, we'll keep each other in check. And that's the only way to do it, us with the community. We're all going to be balanced.
Thank you, Mr. Gottsman.
And our next speaker is Patty Overly.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. As I'm listening to you guys talk about your goals, I'm wondering if you would consider a goal going forward to allow the citizens once a month to have a full three minutes to speak. I just watched a city council member argue over having a timer on their screen so that our mayor could focus on the topic and not watching her iPhone timer. That was so important that that timer not be on the screen. But we have citizens, your constituents, who are being evicted and children who were crying last time we met, again tonight, and they are cut to a minute and a half. You get to hear from your citizens, your constituents, that every one of you say across the entire city, everybody matters, not just your district. But yet you cannot even give three minutes a month for public comments. You cut the citizens down. But then spend 10 minutes arguing about a timer displayed that all the citizens have to look at when they speak. I mean, it seems a little immature. And in the big scope of things, when people are losing their homes, we have streets that need to be repaired. We have safety with traffic issues. We have all sorts of things going on, and the citizens are cut down. I think working a little overtime, once a month, an extra hour once a month would not hurt our city council. I know you're all working hard, but tonight, that was pretty amazing to watch an argument over a timer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Overly.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. So we will now return the conversation for council deliberation. If there are any comments. Councilmember Brown, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we had our water discussions, the council was provided hours of staff presentation for educational purposes about everything that had to do with wastewater, the estuary, the proposed state water, the legal situations that we were in on varying fronts. And it gave us a full holistic picture of what we were walking into because we were embarking on creating new policy that was unprecedented for the city of Ventura. Same thing with cannabis, same thing with the fire study and all that. That, what I was suggesting earlier is that the broadband discussion kind of deserves the same in-depth look. Not that I don't, I'm not saying I'm for or against SOFI at all. Understanding that many states across the country and state are doing the same thing, it's imperative that every decision be preceded with as much information as possible, especially since we're a part of the Southern California Association of Governments in Los Angeles and many other cities like Long Beach and all across the Southern California region have already had SOFI actually approach them. And a lot of them actually have information about what they did and why they did it. And if they did go with them, why they did go with them. And if they chose not to, why they chose not to. And I think we are missing that information. What we know is that the digital divide during the pandemic did become a virtual cliff, especially for the most in need of digital access. And in the eyes of the federal administration, access to broadband is considered a civil right. And it was important also to have conversations with some of the top ISP internet providers in the industry such as Verizon, Spectrum, AT&amp;T, Frontier, and Cox. And I was shocked to find out that they will not use what's called overbuilding of those fiber optics that SOFI would be installing. They said they have their own. And so the question becomes, if we allow SOFI to build something like that or any entity like that, are we going to be guaranteed that access, that equity of access? Because I heard them say that they, in their contract and the 30-year agreement that we have, it doesn't require them to ensure that the delivery of service. So this is a challenge that every city has to create the opportunity for digital inclusion for every type of service delivery. And this gets cities' desired result and outcome of digital equity. And I believe that's what we seek here in the city of Ventura. And I just wanted to share also that they said that the funding that's going to be brought down from the federal government for broadband is going to be doled out this summer of 2022. And there's $2 billion in that plan. And I know we've received some ARPA funding already, but I'm not, it sounds as if we have the opportunity to have access to more if we participate in regional partnerships with other cities, with SCAG. And I'm not sure if we're already doing that in order to deploy last mile connectivity and middle mile network. So what that means is connecting what lines already exist in the city with what doesn't exist into poor neighborhoods or disadvantaged, vulnerable neighborhoods so that they have access. Because what they were saying is that what we learned during the pandemic is that we, is that internet access prohibited people from having access to emergency information, being able to order food, being able to just basically live and stay connected. The disparities that existed during the pandemic were very clear. What I want to know, as we move forward, if, once that discussion is brought back to us, is are we in a conversation with the Pacific Coast Digital Broadband Consortium, of which Bruce Dincilli, I believe, is the director or in charge of in this area? And if we are having conversations with SCAG about what are the standard best practices? Or are we simply just trying to come up with this all on our own? And what does the current legislation for the Broadband For All Act, what does that establish for us as a city? So when we embark upon making local policy, are we doing what is, and I'm not saying this question not because I want to answer now, but are we creating opportunities for the city of Ventura based upon the state law or the federal policy that already exists? And there's a lot that goes into it. I apologize that I wasn't, between Friday and today, able to create a whole presentation. I just took all the notes that I had from that meeting. The last thing that I'll say is that we, the importance of the conference was that I was able to make connections not only with city, other city officials who've had already embarked upon what we're about to do. But I also got to meet with the Spectrum representative. And although I understand that all the ISPs are competing and they want our business and they want to, you know, get that money, I understand that. And I'm not suggesting that we push in on that. But because I was there, I got to meet with one of their regional representatives who showed me a map that he said, because it's proprietary information, they cannot share exactly where all of their files lines are in the city that already exists, but he could show it to me. I couldn't take a picture of it. And it displayed that across the whole entire city, between Spectrum and the Southern California Edison, that we have files over the entire city. So if we were to build, to bring in SOFI, essentially, it would be overbuilding SOFI, which that means they would be building the files on top of what we already have. And Spectrum would not even be using it. The major providers of Frontier, Verizon, all of them, they would not be providing it. So when SOFI presented and said that they were going to bring competition in with ISP service providers, it meant not the major providers. And so then that begs the question, how much connectivity we would actually have for those more vulnerable residents? And how could we control the cost for those who are low income? So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to the conversation during this discussion because broadband is one of our council goals. And we did have a very robust and intense discussion about it. And so I wanted to see if, moving forward, before we bring it back, that we have a more comprehensive discussion about all the aspects of broadband. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And now we have Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to second a lot of what Councilmember Brown said regarding broadband. It is a hugely complex issue. When we look at, you know, what's going on with funding and grants, when we look at regional partnerships, when we look at equity issues and whether there could be some sort of universal lifeline system. You know, this is why last year, and again this year, I have suggested that this stuff should be hammered out in a subcommittee rather than have it come back to council as sort of a high-stakes yes or no. These things require a lot of thought. I've also suggested to this council that we should have Bill Simmons from the broadband consortium and somebody from the county, maybe Terry Theobald. Gentlemen, I know through the broadband consortium and through the EDC, I do have the pleasure of serving as our council's representative to the Ventura County Economic Development Collaborative. And I have to agree wholeheartedly that we should have a strategy and that equity should be a key focus. I believe I've mentioned to council before that what we have seen over the last couple of years is that lack of broadband has a documented negative health outcome. This is something that doesn't just affect the quality of people's lives, it can actually affect their health. And so as we look at the goal, I hope we can reconsider the process we've been using to find a solution for broadband. And it is incredibly important that we put the work into it rather than hope that somebody will fix it for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Do we have any additional comments from council members? No? All right. Would anybody like to make the motion to receive and file?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor Schrader? Okay, you were going to second? All right, so with that, we will go ahead and take a vote.
Okay, and we have seven ayes and the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. And just as a reminder, the item 13B is being pulled by staff to return to council at a later date, so we will not see that item tonight. And with that, we will continue with any additional public communications?
No additional public communications at this time.
All right, thank you. And so with that, we will adjourn our meeting for today. And we will come back for our regular meeting on May the 23rd. All right, thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.